Good morning, we will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five to order. Let the record show, we have one Commissioner absent, Commissioner Keller. First item this morning will be our opening ceremonies, Pledge of Allegiance. First item this morning is our Order of Business, Mr. Solacek, is there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, there's no change to the Order of Business.
Thank you, Commissioners, any questions for staff, if not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Order of Business, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Item two this morning is the minutes of the previous session, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, is there any corrections to those minutes that you guys noticed that we need to make? If not, we'd move to approve them.
All motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the previous minutes, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. We will move into our regular agenda items this morning, our first item is a rezoning request, REZ dash zero zero six dash twenty twenty-five. This is to consider a zoning map amendment for low-density residential R one to general commercial GC. For lot three, block two of Stocker's first edition subdivision, located in the west half of section twenty-two, township one thirty-nine north. Range ninety-six west in the city of Dickinson's ETZ, the site consists of approximately three point four acres, Ms. Burchak, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner, so the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from low-density residential or R one to general commercial or GC. For lot three of block two of the Stocker's first edition subdivision located within the city of Dickinson's extraterritorial zone. So the purpose of this rezoning is to conform the zoning pattern with the zoning that's located to the west of this property. In order to subdivide that property into just one lot. So the associated Stocker third edition preliminary major subdivision plat, which is listed as PLP dash zero zero three dash twenty twenty-five. Was previously heard at the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and was recommended for approval by the Commission. So this was also heard at that August thirteenth meeting, however, we realized after the fact that there was an issue with how it was listed in the advertisement for the meeting. And so it had to be re-advertised and brought forward again. Staff rec- or we've received no public comments on this property so far and staff would recommend approval of this rezoning request. Contingent upon the final approval of the Stocker's third edition subdivision. And then the applicant is present to answer any questions that you guys might have, as I mentioned before, staff recommends approval contingent on approval of that subdivision.
Excuse me, thank you, Ms. Burchak, any questions for staff regarding this rezoning request, Commissioners? Alright, seeing none, does the applicant have anything they'd like to say, okay, I see Mr. Schrank shaking his head. At this time then, we will open the public hearing regarding this rezoning request. If there's anybody in the public that has any comments or concerns regarding this rezone request zero zero six dash twenty twenty-five. Please come forward, or you can call into seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six. One more time, is there anybody in the public that has any comments or concerns regarding this rezone request? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing, Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Buller.
I move the city of Dickinson Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of REZ dash zero zero six dash two thousand twenty-five. The Stocker rezoning request is being consistent with the city of Dickinson comprehensive plan. As being compliant with the city of Dickinson zoning ordinance and as being in the interest of public health, safety and welfare.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move into item B this morning, this is a special use permit, SUP dash zero zero four dash twenty twenty-five. To consider a special use permit for a medical office at one oh nine Seventh Street West. Legally described as lot one of block three of the Hilliard and Manning first edition subdivision. And for the off-street parking associated with the proposed medical office on a property legally described as lot eleven, block four. Of the Hilliard and Manning's first edition subdivision. Both lots are located in the northwest quarter of section three, township one thirty-nine north, range ninety-six west in the city of Dickinson. Both lots are zoned high-density residential R three and the site consists of approximately point one six two acres, Ms. Burchak.
Thank you Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner, the applicant's requesting a special use permit to operate a medical office. Within this high-density residential or R three zoning district on a property legally described as lot one in block three of the Hilliard and Manning first edition subdivision. As well as utilize a property legally described as lot eleven of block four of the Hilliard Manning first edition subdivision for off-street parking associated with the medical office. Both properties are located within the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section three, township one thirty-nine north, range ninety-six west within the city of Dickinson. These properties are approximately zero point one two, one six two acres in total. According to the applicant, the purpose of the special use permit is to open and operate a chiropractic medical office within the existing structure. It was previously used by Saint Joseph's Hospital as the bone and joint center, so it has a history of medical office uses. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this property, the applicant should be present to answer any questions. Staff would recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed at the end of the staff report that I will quickly list off. So the conditions are that operation of the medical office shall be as described in the staff report as well as in the material found in attachment A. The maximum number of doctors shall be determined by the number of off-street parking spaces provided. Our ordinance requires three spaces per doctor. So just depending on how many spaces are provided once that parking lot has been kind of re-paved. The SUP approval shall expire with any change in ownership of the business or property. All subsequent owners of the property shall be required to reapply for SUP approval. All operations and site designs must abide by all relevant city, state and federal guidelines. And the two lots included in this permit may not be sold separately by the applicant and in the event that either lot is sold separately, this special use permit is considered voided and the facility must cease operations. As of now, staff would recommend approval of this special use permit, based on those conditions.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Burchak, any other questions for Ms. Burchak regarding this, Commissioners? Alright, does the applicant have anything they'd like to say? Do we have any questions for the applicant? I think this building is, has a pretty significant history as being a medical office in all the years I've been around, so I don't have any real big questions for it. Okay, if there's no questions, we will open the public hearing regarding this special use permit. If there's anybody in the public that has any comments or concerns regarding SUP dash zero zero four dash twenty twenty-five. Please come forward, or you can call into four five six seven zero zero six. Come forward. Good morning, just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Dustin Young, my property is located at six twenty-eight First Avenue West, it's lot ten. Direct- located directly to the south of the off-street parking. I love that, I just want to first off say that I love that they're redoing the building and they're redoing the parking lot and it's actually being used. My only concern is the increase of traffic, potentially could increase the potential property damage, I have a fence that lines between the parking lot and my property. And the way that the parking lot and the way the cars are parked, they kind of park north and south. When they back out of the parking lot, they back towards my fence with the renters that are using the White House on the corner right now. I've had instances where people have backed into the fence and so again, with more traffic, more issues with damage and so I'm just kind of curious. If they're, the hospital used to have protector pillars that would, people could back into like wooden pillars to where the The people driving the vehicle would know that they hit something and stop before they hit the fence. Those have since rotted out and I'm wondering if the city or the potential new owners could help out in putting new protective pillars to protect the property on the south side of that parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant have any comments regarding that? Just state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Eric Seiler. I mean, if, if that becomes an issue or if it is, you know, an issue, that is something that we, we would Be able to put some sort of barrier, some sort of structure in between that fence line and the curb of, of where that parking lot does end.
Okay, have you had any conversations with?
Have not.
Okay.
No.
Maybe you guys could just maybe get together in the meantime and see if you can work out a?
Absolutely, figure, figure something out to make it work for both parties.
Okay, does that seem adequate to you? Alright, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, any other questions for staff or the applicant, Commissioners? Alright, one more time, is there anybody else in the public that has any comments or concerns regarding this special use permit? Hearing and seeing no other comments, we will close the public hearing, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move the city of Dickinson Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of SUP dash zero zero four dash two zero two five. Seiler special use permit is meeting all the requirements of the Dickinson Municipal Code and also being in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare.
Second.
Commissioners, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move into item C this morning, this is to consider a final minor plat, FLP dash zero zero eight dash twenty twenty-five. This is to consider a minor subdivision plat for the Prairie Creek third edition subdivision. Being a replat of lot one A and block, of block two of Prairie Creek first edition subdivision located in the northwest Quarter of section thirty-three, township one forty north, range ninety-six west in the city of Dickinson. The site consists of approximately five point three five acres, Ms. Burchak.
Thank you Commissioners, so the applicant is request, Natalie Burchak, City Planner, so the applicant is requesting a final minor subdivision plat for the Prairie Creek third edition subdivision. This proposed subdivision is a replat of lot one A of block two of the Prairie Creek subdivision located within the northwest quarter of section thirty-three. Township one forty north, range ninety-six west within the city of Dickinson. This property is approximately five point three seven acres. According to the applicant, the purpose of the subdivision is to divide the property into three smaller lots. In order to facilitate the sale and redevelopment of the property. This is being brought in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission as it has been previously split through the administrative lot process, hence why the legal description is lot one A. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this property. The applicant should be present to answer any questions, if not, I am here to answer any questions that you guys might have. Staff would recommend approval of this plat.
Thank you, Ms. Burchak. Commissioners, any questions for staff regarding this? We all, this is right off of State Avenue behind Used to be the crossings, now the church, I believe, there's those, that property right along State there, so. Any questions for staff? Does the applicant have any comments they would like to make regarding this Plot application? Okay, hearing none. I guess we will move into the public hearing. We will open the public hearing regarding this final minor plat for the Prairie Creek third subdivision, if there's anybody in the public That has any comments or concerns regarding this application, please come forward. Or once again, you can call into seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six if you're watching online. One more time, anybody in the public have any comments or concerns regarding this minor subdivision application? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing, Commissioners? Anything else, if not, I would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion, I move the city of Dickinson Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of FLP dash zero zero eight dash twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five Prairie Creek third edition finer, final minor subdivision. As meeting all the requirements of the Dickinson Municipal Code and also being in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Burchak. We will move into item D this morning, this is a zoning text amendment, ZTA dash zero zero three dash twenty twenty-five. This is to consider a zoning text amendment to section fifty-two dash one definitions of the subdivisions chapter Of the city of Dickinson Municipal Code regarding requirements for administrative lot modification process, Ms. Burchak.
Thank you Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner, so the community development staff is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to section fifty-two dash one definitions and section fifty-two dash four procedure. In chapter fifty-two subdivisions for the Dixon Municipal Code. To include a requirement that implements a maximum lot size for lot combinations. Prevents an administrative lot modification process from being utilized in conjunction with a rezone request. And requires the city planner's signature for any lot modifications that take place in town. The intent of this amendment is to prevent the administrative lot modification process from significantly altering the characteristics of the surrounding areas. While circumventing the typical subdivision process. So the changes that we are proposing is for the lot combination definition, we are adding Point A in residential zoning districts, the new lot area may not meet or exceed seventeen thousand square feet for high-density residential or R three. One acre for low-density residential and medium residential, medium-density residential R one and R two. Or mobile home MH, or meet or exceed ten acres in the rural residential or RR zoning district. So these lot sizes were selected due to being the lot size minimum for the next kind of step up in residential zoning districts, so. In order to be agricultural, you need to be ten acres, so this prevents people from Just combining a bunch of rural residential lots into a ten-acre lot that they can later rezone into an agricultural lot. That now meets those requirements without going through the subdivision process. For commercial, the limited commercial zoning district, the new lot area may not meet or exceed twelve thousand square feet. And then point C, the subject lot must not have been rezoned within the past one year. So additional changes for fifty-three dash one, lot split means an administrative lot division of one previously plotted lot, there's been some confusion in the past over whether that means multiple lots that can't add up to four. This clarifies that it is one lot that can be split, you can't split multiple lots with the same lot modification. And then we added point D, the subject property must not have been rezoned within the past one year. In order to prevent lot splits from being used in conjunction with lot, or with rezonings. And then the change to MC dash, or fifty-two dash four. An application for a lot modification shall be submitted to the city planner, the city planning director is not a position that the city currently has. And is not a position that the city is looking to add in the near future. Which is why that change is made and then at the end on number four, the irregular plat must be signed by city planner and city engineer or designees prior to recording. And with that, I will take any questions that the commission might have, staff recommends approval of this zoning text amendment.
Commissioners, any questions, first Ms. Burchak?
Do you see this bringing more, I should say, causing more time to be needed to bring it force to, or more things coming to, to planning and zoning? I should say.
For the most part, the only one that we've seen happen pretty frequently is the lot splits being used in conjunction with rezonings. So that would either add another year if they still want to take advantage of lot modifications, or they would submit the rezone and the minor subdivision together. As opposed to submitting an administrative lot split separately and then the rezone comes in front of planning and zoning, so it shouldn't add any time to development. It should just make sure that it's transparent to the Planning and Zoning Commission what's going on at each lot. And then the lot combination isn't something that's come up frequently, but it's something that we are trying to curb before it becomes an issue. So that we don't have people using the lot combination to add as many lots as they want and significantly alter the character of an area. Particularly in the R three when that can be used to go from a single-family home into an apartment building without any public input.
What do you mean if it's? If it's already R three, it's already zoned, I mean, that would only be if you were going to change it from R one to R three.
No, because you need to have a specific lot size in order to build an apartment complex, there's a lot minimums for that use. And so that's why the seventeen thousand square feet for high-density residential was selected because Seventeen thousand is the minimum that you need for a five-unit complex, which is normally It's allowed in R three, if you have a lot larger than that, it would not be allowed in R two at all. You can only have a maximum of four units per lot in R two, so this is kind of to prevent That character, because you've got a lot of R three zoning in town where it's smaller lots with single-family residences. They can't use the lot combination process to combine a bunch of those and build apartments that are then surrounded by single-family residences without going through the subdivision process. It's a long-winded way of saying this prevents hidden R three from just being abused.
In the splitting process, explain that to me again.
So in the past, we've had people that submit a lot split along with a rezone, so if somebody has an R one lot that they're wanting to turn into duplexes. They'll submit a rezone to the Planning and Zoning Commission for R two and then submit a lot split Pretty much alongside that, that can't be approved until the rezone is approved. But it doesn't have to go in front of planning and zoning, so In theory, when we are approving the rezone, we, the applicant could say this is for a single-family home. And to the commission and then submit a lot modification to city staff later that then splits it without any input. So it could be kind of some false information to the commission. Whereas having this one-year buffer encourages them to submit both at the same time. Because otherwise, you have to wait a year in order to split that.
So that would only be in a situation where it's R one, if it's already R two or R three, then, and there's no rezone
Yeah.
Required, then this lot split process would still be administrative.
Yes, if it's already R two, then they can do the lot split perfectly fine, as long as it's been R two for longer than a year. Which for the most part, a lot of that would be, we don't have like large swaths of rezonings.
Alright, Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Burchak? Alright, thank you, Ms. Burchak.
Thank you.
There's no applicant here, so this is a city thing, so we will open the public hearing regarding this. If anybody in the public has any comments or concerns regarding this zoning text amendment Of chapter fifty-two, please come forward to the podium or, once again, you can call into four five six seven zero zero six. Anyone in the public have any comments or concerns regarding this proposed zoning text amendment? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move the city of Dickinson Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of ZTA dash zero zero three dash two zero two five. The lot modification requirement zoning text amendment as being consistent with the city of Dickinson comprehensive plan. As being compliant with the city of Dickinson zoning ordinance and as being in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, we will move into item E, this is a zoning text amendment, ZTA dash zero zero four dash twenty twenty-five. This is to consider a zoning text amendments to section sixty-two dash ten definitions. Section sixty-two dash one sixty-two development regulations and to table sixty-two dash one sixty-two dash two. Table of permitted uses by zoning district of the zoning ordinance regarding the removal of vehicle storage, commercial use. And to section sixty-two dash four sixty-nine, commercial uses of the zoning ordinance regarding the screening requirements for outdoor storage. Relating to auto repair, equipment repair and body repair uses, Ms. Burchak, that was a mouthful.
Oh yeah. Thank you Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner. So the city is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to section sixty-two dash ten definitions. Table sixty-two dash one sixty-two dash two permitted uses by zoning district in section sixty-two dash one sixty-two development regulations. And sixty-two dash four sixty-two's commercial uses in chapter sixty-two zoning Of the Dickinson Municipal Code in order to clarify the classification and design standards Of outdoor storage and vehicle storage in relation to the auto services use. The intention of this amendment is to clearly define the standards that the city of Dickinson utilizes regarding vehicles related to the auto services use. So the proposed changes to the zoning text amendment, or to the text Are in sixty-two dash ten definitions, outdoor storage means the storage of materials, parts or products that are related to the primary use of a site for a period exceeding three days. Motor vehicles regardless of their mechanical state of operability shall not be subject to the parameters of this section even when serving as the product of the primary use of the site. There was some confusion on whether vehicles would be considered as a product in this use type. This clearly states as the city has been enforcing it in the past, that no, motor vehicles are considered motor vehicles, not as outdoor storage. So in table sixty-two dash one sixty-two dash two in development regulations. So this proposal eliminates vehicle storage as a use, the city already has vehicle storage short-term and vehicle storage long-term defined in the municipal code. Vehicle storage is not defined and this adds some confusion as to how it could be utilized in general, commercial and light industrial. Eliminating it clearly states that vehicle storage in the short-term, which is anything under twenty-one days. Is allowed in GC, LI and GI, whereas vehicle storage long-term, which is longer than twenty-one days, is only allowed in LI or GI, there's no confusion with an additional vehicle storage. And the code change for section sixty-two dash four sixty-nine commercial uses Is that auto repair, equipment repair and body repair, when permitted in commercial districts, all repair activities must take place within a completely enclosed building. Outdoor storage is permitted only where incidental to auto repair and body repair. Provided that such storage is completely screened so as not to be visible from residential areas or public rights of way. Motor vehicles regardless of their current mechanical state of operability are not classified as outdoor storage and shall fall under the same screening parameters as vehicle storage short-term use. So this means that vehicles can be stored for a maximum of twenty-one So this means that vehicles can be stored for a maximum of 21 days, and they do not have to be screened from the residential areas or public rights-of-way under this code. They do still have to be screened under the buffer requirements for any space in between residential areas and commercial. So if you have an R3 district right next to an auto service shop that's zoned as GC, screening is still going to be required, just not under this ordinance. It's under a different ordinance, which is how it's been enforced in the past by the city. So those are the changes that are being made to the municipal code, and staff is present to answer any questions that you guys might have. We sent out letters to the 26 auto repair shops, as well as anybody within 300 feet of those auto repair shops. So far, we have received a total of 12 calls, and I think one total was opposed to this change, as well as a couple other issues that came up during that phone call that were a little bit more site-specific. But staff would recommend approval of this text amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burcheck. Any questions for Ms. Burcheck? All right. I see Mr. Schwint back there. Do you want to make any comments regarding this, since you're the enforcer? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leonard Schwint, building official for the City of Dickinson. I've been with the city well over 23 years, and this does clarify by these definitions how we have been enforcing this for at least that many years. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Schwint? Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for staff? If not, we will move into the public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that has any comments or concerns regarding the zoning text amendment change, you can come forward to the podium, state your name, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Jay Wilhelm, Dickinson Econo Storage. My business is located on Sims and 22nd Street, up on the north end. I might be muddying the waters a little bit. I know you guys are trying to clarify, but I've got... I have been running into issues up there for years, ever since one business moved in. And it's an auto repair shop. The vehicles from his business end up parking over on my side of the street, all the way along 22nd Street. And I end up with no snow removal on the street, which I realize the street is totally different, like I was told when I called the city yesterday. But I've already had meetings with the PD. I've had meetings with Josh. I've had meetings with Leonard. The fire department was there. The police department was there. Pretty much everybody was there. And, you know, it's always, wow, we can't make exceptions for that, although we have variance boards in this town, and there are exceptions made for a lot of things. And I have Rod, I know Rod from R&amp;R. He was forced to put up a fence all the way around his property and screen all of his vehicles, whether they were there just to be worked on. I think parking on a street for 21 days in a business district is ridiculous, because I can't clean the sidewalk, or I'm going to blow somebody's window out unless I would actually hand-sweep the entire sidewalk. I can't clean up any of the gravel or the mess out on the, on the first part of the street. I also can't, I can't have my people move snow. I can't move snow, and I can't have the city move snow. So in the wintertime, there is usually about this much ice, because if you're familiar with those streets up there, they're theoretically convex like this, but actually this side is higher. So all the water from the north runs down, runs through my property, which is a totally different subject, and I'm not here for that. The problem is, is that there is usually about this much ice, and it's dangerous, and it never can be cleared, because there are always vehicles from the repair shop that are parked there. Matter of fact, I know a few people that have towing companies and towing services. They're actually told to park those vehicles on the street, the south side of the street. The business I'm talking about is on the north side of the street. And if you go up there and you actually drive up there at any point in time, it's not so bad in the evening, because you will only see the cars that are being worked on. But during the day, all of the businesses along the north side of that road, or that street, park on my side of the street. You know, most of them, because I go over and complain a lot and say, "Move it", they have gotten good and they leave certain spaces open. But there is a roll-up curb along that entire thing, from Sims all the way over. The reason there's a roll-up curb is because vehicles come in there that are 30 feet long, 24 feet long U-Hauls, people that have vehicles with fifth-wheel trailers. You know, by the time you put a good-sized truck together in a fifth-wheel trailer that's long, you can have just about 35 feet. Well, you gotta be able to, you know, you can't just come into a little narrow driveway and expect to maneuver around. And like I said, it's... I don't know if it, I don't know how much of it can tie into this. But since you're trying to clarify everything, I would like this clarified and why I can't get any relief from it.
Mr. Wilhelm, I think the big thing to remember here, it doesn't change anything in what we're talking about for this text related to the 48-hour parking, on-street parking.
Yeah, but the 48-hour street parking is never enforced up there. And we discussed that at the meeting. And nothing has changed, and that was, I think that meeting was what, a year and a half ago? And because of that, and the way this is done, I had to evict one of my tenants, because I don't have the... If you look at the way the buildings are laid out up there, building number six is the one that would have been in question. I had an auto mechanic up there. He worked on semis. All of his mess was either on my side of the street, which it should have been, or it was around that building on the side in the back. Well, the city said I had to put up a fence. There is not enough logistical room in there to put a fence all the way around the front and the back. And basically, I told Josh, I said, "I got no, I have no option. I have to kick the guy out." He just about didn't find a spot, so we just about lost one business in town because of this. And all I was trying to do is get no overnight parking signs along my side of the street, so that the vehicles, it wouldn't even have affected the people that are trying to park during the day that work across the street. It would have only affected overnight parking, so that the area can be cleaned up for that $80,000 sidewalk that I was forced to put in about four years ago, too. I would like to be able to have a little bit of relief. This may not be the right avenue, but I figure the more people that get to know about the problem, maybe I can finally get something done.
Josh, I guess, I'm not sure this amendment addresses the street parking anyway. This is off-street parking only, correct?
Yeah, I would like to clarify, there's no impact to street parking rules and requirements from this amendment. There's no changes to how it is currently handled.
Except in my case, it's not being handled. Those cars that are parked there for longer than two days are not being ticketed. They're not being towed. So it might not change anything, but what is supposed to be enforced is not being enforced.
Yeah, because the 21 days does not include the street parking or right-of-way, correct?
That is correct.
And that's always, so on-street parking would be a PD issue if it's more than 48 hours.
That is correct.
Well, like I said, the PD and the fire department was also at that meeting. And I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, not trying to lay blame. I'm just trying to get a situation that has been going on for the last 10 years, and we've owned, ever since the auto repair moved in there. And we have been there way longer than that.
Well, I would assume the fence was for screening of off-street parking. The stuff that he had off-street.
But the one across the street from me has the same problem I do. If he's forced to screen, he will have to move, because he has no... He doesn't have the room to screen between buildings and park.
But the screening requirements only are for parts, right? It's not vehicles?
So this amendment clarifies that, yes, a screen only has to apply for outdoor storage of mechanical parts, anything that's kind of supplemental to the repair.
So that means, that means when this is done, if that goes through, that means Rod from R&amp;R can take his fence down, right?
Depends on whether or not the fence is currently being used to screen outdoor materials.
No, it's being used to screen vehicles.
Depends also then on how long the vehicles, as long as they're there for less than 21 days. I mean, we would have to look into it a little bit further to say yes or no, but...
If he can guarantee that his vehicles are there less than 21 days, he can take the screening down.
I would recommend that he comes in for a pre-application meeting with the city to verify any of this information.
Yeah.
Okay. And I haven't talked to him lately about it, but yeah, he was not happy that he had to put up the fence either.
From my understanding, R&amp;R's issues are more all the vehicles he has parked outside the fence along the right-of-way, in the right-of-way.
No, but originally, he didn't have a fence, and he had to put one up with the slots in it. Originally, he did not have a fence.
Yeah, I guess I'm not aware of that situation.
It's going back a little bit, but the city forced him to put up that fence. There are some subsequent things about some of the vehicles parked out in front, and, you know, he's, we've talked about it. That's a different thing, but I'm just saying, if this passes that way, and it's vehicles only, and he has not talked to me about this. He hasn't said, "Well, if they..." That's just something that's coming into my head right now. If that passes, he should be able to take down his fence.
If he's only storing vehicles back there, I would, I would agree that would probably be the situation, but we would have to review it. But like I said, I think more of the issue up there is, from my understanding, is all the stuff in the front of the fence, that's, because the right-of-way is really wide there, and he's parking cars all over the right-of-way. I think that's more of the issue than the stuff behind the fence.
Currently, but like I said, he did have to put up a fence, so.
Yeah. That was probably before my time, so I don't really have, no, but for sure, but... But, all right. Anything else, Mr. Wilhelm? All right. Thank you.
Nope.
All right. Anyone else in the public have any comments regarding this?
Good morning. My name is Kirk Jorgensen. I live at like 1057 Fourth Avenue West, and I received this public notice in the mail last week, and I'm wondering what this pertains to. Where is this located at that they're going to make these changes? Is this on my street, or...?
So the reason you would have received that letter is because you're within 300 feet of any kind of auto service business. I would have to look a little bit closer into which one specifically, but it would just impact the auto service business.
Okay, like T-Brex Conoco.
Yeah.
That's within 300 feet of there, so.
It most likely then would have been triggered by that, yes.
Okay, that's why I received this.
Yes.
Okay. That was my concern. I was just wondering if it pertained to my block, or if there was something going on there, or what?
You were just within 300 feet of one of the service businesses, so.
Yeah, okay. So that was my concern.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Yep. Anyone else in the public have any comments or concerns regarding this text amendment? One more time. Anyone in the public have any more comments or concerns regarding this zoning text amendment? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners? I think this is more of a cleanup, that the way we've been enforcing it made it a little, the definitions a little easier to understand. Do you have any other questions for staff, or...?
Mr. Chairman, I do have some couple comments that I'd like to make.
All right. Ms. Winko?
With regard to the off-street parking, there has been some questions raised, and we're working through the logistics of it as to whether a auto repair service should be held responsible for a violation, a parking violation. For example, let's say that a individual drops off a vehicle, and that individual, for example, parks in a no-parking zone, or they leave it there for more than 24, excuse me, 48 hours, whether that particular business owner is responsible then for that violation. And so we are, that's another level of complexity that we're having to work with. And so I'm assuming that most of the business owners would not be in support of that. No one has spoke on that here today. But that is another thing that we're trying to address through this. That has been an issue that has come up in some other circumstances. And so we will do the best we can to address that. I think that's going to be done on a case-by-case basis, when those things are reported to the police department and eventually potentially through code enforcement. But I just wanted to make you all aware of that, that that is another issue that has arisen as to whether that is a responsibility or an obligation of the auto repair service. So again, we'll take that on a case-by-case basis, but just so that you all are aware.
Okay. I'm just, I mean, they report the violation, I mean, how... I mean, the violation would be the owner that dropped it off. I mean, the only situation that would be different is like, let's say, a tow truck dropped it off on the street in a no-parking zone, or...
That's the interpretation that I believe the Dickinson Police Department has utilized in the past. And so, again, we're going to be looking at it on a case-by-case basis. I don't think that there's a set answer for every situation, but just so that you're all aware that that issue has come up in another situation. So again, we're doing the best we can to address it, and we'll take it as it comes.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Winko. Any questions? Right. All right. Everyone, I guess we close the public hearing. Any other questions? If not, I would look for a motion.
I move the City of Dickinson Planning and Zoning can recommend approval of ZTA-004-2025, Vehicle Storage and Auto Servicing Zoning Text Amendment, as being consistent with the City of Dickinson Comprehensive Plan, also being in compliance with the City of Dickinson Zoning Ordinance and being in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move into item F this morning. This is another zoning text amendment, ZTA-005-2025, to consider text amendments to section 16-166, Conditional Use Permit Site Plan of Environment's Chapter of the City of Dickinson Municipal Code Regarding Submittal of a Site Plan for Oilwell Drilling in accordance with the North Dakota Century Code, and to section 16-167, Inspections of the Environment's Chapter of the City of Dickinson Municipal Code Regarding to City Inspections of Oilwell Sites, and to the section 62-162, Development Regulations, and to table 62-162-2, Table of Permitted Uses by Zoning District of the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Permitting of Oilwells and Resource Extraction in the Agricultural, AG, and General Industrial, GI zoning districts after public hearing in front of the City Commission and approval from the North Dakota Industrial Commission. Another mouthful this morning.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcheck, City Planner. So Community Development Staff is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to section 16-166, Conditional Use Permit Site Plan, and section 16-167, Inspections in Chapter 16, Environment, as well as table 62-162-2, Permitted Uses by Zoning District, in section 62-162, Development Regulations, in chapter 62, Zoning of the Dickinson Municipal Code, to remove the requirement of approval of a conditional use permit and a special use permit for oil wells and resource extraction. So the intention of this amendment is to align the Dickinson Municipal Code with the North Dakota Century Code, with their requirements regarding permitting of oil well drilling being up to the North Dakota Industrial Commission. So although it's tough to read up there, the changes that we are making, we are removing the requirement for a conditional use permit, as well as changing the section name to Submittal of Site Plan. So this requires that any company or any organization looking to drill an oil well submits a site plan to city staff containing the following information, which is all of the information listed on the right of that slide. And then the city commission shall hold an official public hearing, giving at least 15 days' notice of said public hearing, the purpose of which shall be to determine whether any additional reasonable requirements shall be placed on the proposed site as determined by resolution. In regards to the North Dakota Industrial Commission, or NDIC, requirements, this resolution shall be considered as proof the applicant has informed the city of the proposal, and this resolution shall be shared with the NDIC as part of the applicant's permit application. So this should take place prior to the NDIC permitting any oil wells taking place within the city limits or the extraterritorial zone of the city. or the extraterritorial zone of the city. And then section sixteen dash one six-seven, for the purposes of this article, the city or its authorized representatives may inspect any well location at any time for the purposes of ensuring conformance with NDIC requirements. Any applicant hereunder shall be deemed to have granted the agents of the city the right of entry onto those properties outlined during the public hearing for the purpose of carrying out the inspections as required by the city. So this just removes any language regarding the conditional use permit and instead makes it clear that it is permitted by the NDIC. There is another section, section sixteen dash one seven zero, uh, zoning, which also mentions the conditional use permit. We were not able to, uh, notice that section along with this zoning text amendment, so it will be brought forward as a separate text amendment at the next meeting. It will not be a workshop, don't worry. And then, uh, the last one is for table six-two dash one sixty-two dash two, permitted uses by zoning district. We are changing the requirements for both oil wells and resource extraction from requiring a special use permit to being permitted in ag and GI zoning. This is the section that will be, uh, changed in the future. And additionally, these, uh, permitted uses will also make note of the previous sections of section sixteen dash one six-six that showcases the requirements that oil wells face in regards to being permitted. Uh, just to make clear that our requirements are that they go in front of city commission for a public hearing prior to approval. And with that, I will take any questions that you guys might have.
So in a nutshell, we can't require a special use permit for oil wells since we don't approve them, correct?
Yes, so it's outside of the city's jurisdiction.
All right. Okay, so we're just cleaning up the language.
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right. Not, uh, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody in the public has any comments or concerns regarding this zoning text amendment regarding oil wells and conditional use permits, please come forward or you can call into seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six. One more time, anyone in the public have any comments or concerns regarding ZTA dash zero zero five dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners.
Mister Chairman, I move the City of Dickinson Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend approval of ZTA dash zero zero five dash two zero two five, the oil well requirement zoning text amendment as being consistent with the City of Dickinson Comprehensive Plan, as being compliant with the City of Dickinson zoning ordinance and as being in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move out of our agenda to the next item. Public issues of concern not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the public that has any comments or concerns that they'd like to discuss this morning, they can come forward to the podium, state their name. Just a reminder, everybody's still under the five-minute time requirement as been approved by the city commission a few months ago. Anyone in the public have any comments or concerns they would like to address this morning? Hearing and seeing none, we will close that item. Commissioners, item five, items not on the agenda that you would like to discuss that were not discussed this morning. Is there anything? Nobody's raising their hands, so we will move on. The next item is the work session that we have scheduled this morning. This is an update of the Transportation and Comp Plan. Ms. Burchak, I think you're gonna lead the intro.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burchak. So, uh, we've got a presentation of the Transportation and Comprehensive Master Plan that we have been updating since, uh, late twenty twenty-three. I've got KLJ as well, uh, that will be given IT just a second to try and swap over their presentations. They've got a, uh, short presentation about the executive summary. Uh, so, city's been working with KLJ since twenty twenty-three to update both the Transportation and Comprehensive Master Plan. We are getting close on the final draft. That has been submitted to you guys. It was included in your packet. Uh, if you've had any time to review any of the sections, but the KLJ team should be given kind of a quick summary of some of the key points of that document. Uh, I believe online we've got Wade and Joel, but I'll let them kind of introduce themselves a little bit more. Uh, are you guys able to present? Has that been swapped over just yet, Wade and Joel?
Yeah, I can, I, I can share from here. Is that correct, Natalie?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, that comes through.
And then, are we able to make that the main screen? Anyone back? All right, KLJ, I will let you take it away.
All right, well, yes, thank you. Uh, thanks for the introduction, Natalie. Thank you, Chairman Bridgich and the Planning Commission for having us in here this morning for an update. Uh, Wade Klein with, with KLJ. I've been the overall project manager, uh, comprehensive, uh, and, uh, transportation master plan, joined by our, uh, senior community planner, Joel Kwanbeck, and, and one of our analysts, Greg Olberding, who have, uh, been working, uh, on this, uh, plan as Natalie, uh, indicated since, um, yeah, late twenty twenty-three, uh, early, uh, twenty twenty-four. So, uh, in your packet, um, I believe was the full, uh, current final draft, uh, that's gone through a couple iterations now as we're moving it kind of towards final approvals, uh, here over the next, uh, several weeks. Um, what I'll do this morning, um, is kind of walk through, uh, this slide deck, which should reference pretty closely information that's in the executive summary. Try to, um, as quickly as possible sort of summarize what's, is a fairly robust, um, document. But kind of start off with, with some key observations. Um, you know, Dickinson is, is a growing community. Um, you know, we were fortunate to have an opportunity to work with you. Obviously, KLJ has done a lot of work with, with the community. I should note also that a subconsultant on this project was Apex Engineering. There was, uh, an infrastructure, uh, master planning component. Um, you'll find that in the back of the full draft. Um, so I do want to recognize Scott Schneider and the team from Apex who also partnered with us on this. Um, you know, great, strong technical leadership, um, you know, driving this. It was a, a great opportunity to work with your team there, Natalie and Josh, uh, Stephen, um, you know, significant investments are already in place, um, a lot of growth, uh, over the past ten to fifteen years. Um, this plan recognizes that. Um, we also recognize and I'll talk a little bit about, um, maybe a little bit more of a measured, but still positive growth trend for the community. Um, I think what you'll see in this plan, both in the work that our traffic team did, uh, also the work, uh, that Scott Schneider and the Apex team did is, um, a lot of the projected system needs fit generally with inside the capacity of the community. Either A has already invested over the past several years or is anticipating to invest over the next, uh, five to eight years. So really what this plan allowed us to do, um, is really focus on a, on a proactive investment and growth strategy, and we'll talk a little bit about what that means and what it gives, uh, you know, Josh and his team in engineering a chance to do is, is really start, you know, focusing on maintenance and preservation, managing what we have, what you have. Uh, I should say, um, not as much focus on, on trying to, you know, sort of keep up with the growth. It's kind of a little bit more of a, a measured approach. So I think that's a, a big piece of, of what this plan kind of entails overall. Um, we did a lot of public engagement, um, over the past year and a half. We just completed our second phase. Uh, we had an open house, uh, meeting a, a couple of weeks ago. We worked with a, with a sort of a stakeholder group, uh, that met four or five times throughout the planning process. This is the schools, parks, um, you know, economic development, the airport, you know, really making sure that we were using those voices to, to hear what the plan was saying, uh, to make sure that they had a chance to, to sort of course correct us or help us, um, you know, develop various elements of the plan. Uh, we worked closely with the project management team that included Josh and Natalie, others, North Dakota DOT, who was a huge partner, um, in this, in this project. We did a lot of online, um, interactive work, uh, particularly in the first phase, uh, of this, so we, we got, you know, hundreds of voices heard, uh, through online mapping, comment forums. So we, we felt like we really did have, uh, a good opportunity in engaging the community, uh, into how we develop this plan and, and that's, that's a very important, very important component. The first part of, of all of this really comes down to population projections and, and, you know, what, what you see on, on this particular screen is, is the trajectory that, that what we're calling Direction Twenty Fifty sets. Um, you know, this is, is the current, uh, growth trend that, that the plan, uh, uses. It's about a one point four percent, uh, growth rate. Um, it's positive, but it's certainly less than what the last plan, uh, was, was projecting, and I think that's an important note. Um, you know, there was a, a much different economic situation certainly, uh, going on, uh, still positive, but certainly the growth is, is not quite what we thought it was going to be, uh, when the previous plan, um, was developed. I don't think this is anything to be concerned about. It's still very positive growth. I mean, if you look in, uh, the early sections of the plan, um, you know, we look at, say, the population pyramid for the city. It's still a very positive population pyramid. If you look at, um, you know, parent age, you know, thirty to forty-year-olds, a lot of kids. So, um, you know, like, nothing to, to be concerned about. It's like, whoa, are we growing slower a little bit, but one point four percent? Um, you know, working with the project management team felt like it was a, still a very positive, uh, growth rate. So that kind of sets, sets the tone for how we, how we develop the overall plan in terms of trying to forecast infrastructure, forecast transportation, uh, and those kinds of pieces. The other piece, um, that we did, again, kind of going back to that, you know, managing investments, keeping up with growth. Um, part of the growth forecasting piece that we did, uh, was really trying to understand, you know, where do we have infrastructure now? Uh, how much, uh, available land can we, can we get to? You know, the green areas on this map where, where we've already invested infrastructure. There's very little cost to the city, uh, to try to bring that land, uh, into production. You know, where do we have lands, these yellow areas where, you know, there'd be some minor investment there? And where do we have, uh, areas where there are going to be major investments? Uh, those would be the red areas. And, and what we were trying to do is, is work inside the urban service area, which is a, a concept that was developed, a policy concept that was developed, uh, with the last, uh, transportation plan and, and comp plan update that really tried to set, uh, an idea of where the city can reasonably get, uh, with infrastructure, uh, affordably and, and effectively. So we worked within that urban service area. We looked at our twenty fifty projections and, and really what we found, um, is that we've got about the need for about twenty-six hundred acres, uh, of new growth and development over the next twenty-five years to the year twenty fifty. Um, the good news is we've got about twenty-five percent of that, uh, that we can capture, you know, in this, these areas that the infrastructure is already in place. Another fifty percent of that, uh, where we are gonna need some minor investments, you'll need some minor investments. And then, of course, when you get to the tail end of that planning horizon and we talk about that last twenty-five percent, um, you know, there will be some more significant, some major investments to serve that area. But we are trying to do some linkages, you know, this based on the guidance that we got from staff is, you know, we need to try to, you know, manage costs, make sure we're using what, what we already have in the ground. Um, so the twenty fifty growth forecasting combined with, you know, working with Apex and Scott's team to understand, you know, where can we get to most affordably allowed us to kind of develop, um, a sense of, as we develop a future land use plan, how do we start to allocate that growth in, in a, in a little bit more of a cost-effective manner? I talked about the urban service area, uh, on the last slide. This again was something that was developed with the twenty thirteen, um, Comprehensive and Transportation Plan, you know, guides infrastructure growth and development. Um, you know, staff asked that, that this get reviewed and updated, uh, with this planning process. Um, as I mentioned, by and large, you know, most, if not all, of the growth and development that we anticipate by twenty fifty, you know, fits inside of this boundary. Um, but based on a review of this with staff, some, some minor modifications are, are proposed, uh, that would come out of, uh, this planning process. Of course, this area in the northeast, uh, has been de-annexed, um, and then there's a small area, uh, on the south end that, that staff has, has suggested would be, uh, removed from the cert, urban service area. Otherwise, no additional changes, uh, proposed. As I mentioned, you know, our team, Scott Schneider and Apex's team sort of used this general boundary as we were trying to forecast, forecast, allocate growth and, and project, um, infrastructure demands into the future. A pretty significant subcomponent, um, of this process was looking at housing. Um, housing is super important to growth and development for any community. Uh, certainly there were some challenges, uh, you know, during the oil boom, um, between, you know, the data here on the screen shows deltas between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-two. Um, you know, obviously the city made some significant investments in, um, you know, kind of higher-density apartments, you know, certainly some, some single-family homes. Um, but one of the things that the city had asked or that the, the city had asked was to try to come up with a little bit more of a projection or a forecast on how do we continue to meet housing demand within, within the study area. And we really started with a set of base conditions, um, you know, understanding, you know, predominantly what kind of housing, um, currently you'll see that the, the majority of, of acres of, of, you know, kind of residential development in the city is, is single-family. Um, you know, certainly the, the growth in, in, you know, larger-scale apartments, higher-density development certainly took an uptick, uh, over the last ten or twelve years. Um, but what we wanted to do was start with sort of our base, uh, base condition and do both a short and a long-range forecast, both for rental, uh, housing as well as, um, owner-occupied housing. Uh, what this shows here would be, would be our forecast of twenty fifty, so this is a, a, essentially a, a twenty-five-year forecast. Definitely going to need to look at providing additional housing, continue to develop housing. You'll see that there's a gap over the twenty-five-year planning horizon for sort of homeowner, uh, occupied housing of about fifteen hundred units. And you see a lot of that, that gap sort of coming here and, and sort of this market segment in terms of, um, kind of sort of that medium to a little bit of a lower-income, um, population, more of the, you know, kind of workforce housing, if you will, um, starter home kinds of, of things, um, but really provides a, a framework of, of where and what kind of, of sort of, uh, you know, homeowner-occupied or homeowner demand, uh, within the overall study area. Now, we, we followed that up, looking at, at rental demand. Now, certainly the, the community has done a really good job, you know, particularly the last ten to fifteen years of, of bringing on some, some high-quality, uh, rental units. But again, as we look over the life of, of this planning process, you know, again, the, the forecast calls for, you know, we're projecting, you know, north of six hundred units needed beyond what we would anticipate to be there uh, over the life of the, of the planning horizon. And again, you'll see these numbers. Again, it's more of that workforce, kind of entry-level kinds of things, um, and it matches up pretty closely with what we were seeing when you look at some of those deltas there. So, um, not uncommon, in fact, just was a part of a, a roundtable yesterday over here on the east side of the state, you know, talking housing with, with planners. And, you know, housing's a challenge across the state, uh, east side, west side, north side, south side. I mean, it's, it's a struggle. It's gotten expensive. Um, but what this plan does, and you'll see in the executive summary, um, you know, in, in page, starting on, on page nine, we do provide some, some recommendations, uh, and some goals for how staff and, and the community continue to work forward, uh, with trying to address, uh, address some of the projected housing opportunities within, uh, within the City of Dickinson. Um, I think overall, right path, uh, but more work to do. Um, future land use was, was a big part, uh, of what we tried to accomplish with this plan. Um, again, this is a study area view, uh, looking at the, the entire study area that, that we worked with for Direction Twenty Fifty. So it, it does cover, uh, you know, a very broad, um, kind of area. It covers most, if not all, of the extraterritorial zone. Um, you know, it really does, we started with sort of the twenty thirteen Future Land Use Plan. Uh, and really what this land use plan does, again, it goes back to some of the growth forecasting that we did. Um, you know, things have cooled off a little bit, but still, uh, very, uh, positive growth trends. Um, so we see it gets scaled back a little bit more in terms of, uh, sort of the rural reserve areas, uh, on the edges. Um, these would be areas essentially, um, you know, outside of your municipal boundary, but inside of that urban service area. Um, these were areas where typically, uh, in your current future land use map, you had a designated use. Um, but again, based on the work that, that we did is there's probably, there is, uh, enough available land within, uh, within city limits generally to meet a lot of that forecasted need. So, uh, the direction we took is developing a little bit more of a conservative future land use plan that uses tools such as this rural reserve area, uh, and then a big spot on the map where, you know, based on the West Dickinson, uh, subarea study that was done immediately following, uh, the last comprehensive plan. It had a very detailed, robust roadway network. It had a very detailed, robust roadway network, future land use plan. You know, when we looked at that and when we evaluated what was in that particular plan, when we worked with Natalie and the planning team, it felt like a much safer bet to pull a future land use back there to just agricultural. That's not to say that those areas are not going to develop akin to what may have been in the West Dickinson plan. But leaving those areas as agricultural in your future land use map gives the city actually more control over how those areas will develop over time. So at the subarea, at the study area level, this gives you a sense, and this analysis was pretty granular. I mean, we did, Joel and his team did get into the weeds, you know, kind of on more of a parcel-by-parcel view. This would kind of look at it from a little bit more of a zoomed-in approach. Again, as I mentioned, we did look at some different scenarios, you know, for growth and development. We certainly don't have enough time to get into those, though I will say, for the commission's benefit, there is an appendix in the full draft plan that walks through some of the methodologies that were used for that component. In the executive summary is a quick read, starting on page five of some of the land use goals and recommendations that were developed in the plan. And those are important beyond land use. I won't spend a lot of time here. In your executive summary, starting on page eleven, you know, we did do some work on forecasting for parks and recreation, natural history, some cultural resources. So there are elements within the plan that cover some of those more kind of disparate, less core issues regarding growth and development for the City of Dickinson. Traffic, transportation was a big component of this particular plan, obviously as a master transportation plan. What you're looking at here is our existing conditions model that we developed really with a focus on intersections. Really what you see in the existing condition throughout the community is a lot of green. Green suggests, you know, a good level of service, which is how traffic operations is measured. You know, generally, some areas along state, you'll see here, you know, some areas along Highway twenty-two that have kind of been identified in the existing condition. You know, those are areas that we take a look at as we start to develop our forecast model for transportation. We did develop then with our twenty fifty projections. We then take our existing, we take our existing network. I'll just jump back a slide. You can see, you know, a lot of green. You know, as we jump forward, we start to see a little bit more red. You know, that is to be anticipated. We add twenty-five years of growth to the existing system. We start to see, you know, kind of more issues and friction, you know, along Highway twenty-two. We see more issues and friction along state. We see more issues and friction out on the west end. We see some issues and friction here over on tenth. So we use this information as we start to develop some of our technical recommendations. Again, based on the model that we developed, it was more of a, kind of more of like a traffic impact statement kind of approach where we're looking at traffic operations across the whole community. It really allowed us, and I won't go through all of this information, but it really allows us to, you know, kind of pull out areas that have some, either areas of public concern, areas where we have a level of service deep or worse, so that we can start to dial into developing some specific recommendations. And we did. We developed essentially nearly sixty-seven project, kind of overall project recommendations. I'll talk about some of these in a minute. You know, thirteen of them were planned, eleven were short-range, twenty were medium-range, and twenty-three were long-range projects. And this is really the breadth of the projects. The executive summary and the full draft plan list out some of the more specific details. I'll walk through a few, but what I'll note initially is, you know, once we got through our forecasted condition, you know, based on some of the technical analysis, you know, we started looking in particular at some specific quarters. We wanted to kind of go from that area-wide to the overview. You know, so looking at segments of Highway twenty-two, looking at segments of State Avenue, looking particularly at the west end there at Exit fifty-nine, trying to identify, you know, more specific improvements, you know, section of the large between state and ten. So trying to get into the weeds a little bit more, the Fifteenth Street extension, looking at, you know, pieces on Twenty-first on the east side, and then trying to dive a little bit deeper. So, you know, we not only looked at kind of an area-wide, we also wanted to make sure that we were able to get into more specific project recommendations. So as I noted, you know, the plan includes thirteen projects which we consider to be planned. So these would be projects that are already included in the state transportation improvement program developed by the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Good example would be the work on the West Business Loop, some work that they have planned even coming up this next year on Highway twenty-two to kind of complete that multi-year project. And then also projects that are currently, we would consider committed or funded within Josh's capital improvement program. So these are all projects we call planned. We assume that they're gonna happen, and when we were forecasting needs, we took those projects into account. We spent a lot of time working with the capital improvement program, which is a fantastic document that, you know, over the two years that we had an opportunity to work with the city just gets better every iteration. And so that was a very helpful tool for us to work with those CIP projects as starters and then start to do a little bit more of a deep dive to try to identify more specific project recommendations that go beyond just maybe some of the typical maintenance pieces. And I think the important part of that is, you know, as we started to look at the CIP, as we started to look at some of our twenty fifty forecast needs, we also developed a number of new projects. So these were projects that hadn't previously been identified by NDDOT on the state system. These are not projects that had been previously identified in the CIP. And this is a good tranche of projects where, you know, we're kind of additive to what some of those initial needs were done based on that quarter analysis that we did, some of the forecast conditions. And we used a detailed travel model to develop that. Almost done here. I think I'm getting close on time. My apologies. So as we complete this, the last piece of the puzzle, of course, is how much does this cost? And so, you know, for the planned projects, things that are essentially programmed or budgeted to happen, you have about twenty-eight million dollars. That's a combination of local, state, and federal funds. And then we have three additional bands of projects, you know, beyond approximately twenty twenty-eight. So that five years after twenty twenty-eight, about another fifty-three million, fifty-four million. You know, probably the mid-twenty thirties to twenty forty, another seventy-two million, and then from twenty forty to the end of the planning horizon, and maybe a little bit beyond the planning horizon, about another hundred million dollars. But again, the good news is, and these do account for inflation. So again, the reset in closing is that, you know, a lot of this is taking care of the system, you know, kind of fixing up some things that maybe have gotten overlooked. So it's a lot of operations and maintenance, state of good repair things, not a lot of capacity. A lot of the capacity that the system needed was put in place over the past ten or fifteen years since you developed your last transportation plan. So Chairman, that was a lot of information in a very short period of time. I appreciate the opportunity, and I think what I'll do now is turn it back over to Natalie if there's any transition or open it up for any questions that the chair or commission have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burchak.
Yeah, thank you guys for tuning in. Again, the final document is included in your guys' packet if you guys want to take a chance to review that. But just opening the floor to any questions that you guys might have, either of KLJ or of city staff at this point.
There's a lot of here to digest, but if you guys have any questions for KLJ or staff, this would be the time.
I guess I recently got asked about quiet crossings. Is there any potential for that on the floor? I just had a citizen ask me if that was something that the city was looking at at all for the railroad.
Are you talking about the quiet rail crossings?
Yeah, yeah.
That has not been something that's been looked at for quite a while. That's a pretty significant change from an operation standpoint with the NSF, so.
It's just something, someone had asked me, and I thought this kind of fits.
I remember right when I got on the commission, there were some discussions on that, but.
I know it's really expensive.
I mean, yeah, the upgrades that were required for the rail crossings were astronomical, if I remember even back then, so.
I can't remember what it was. I saw something in a transportation journal recently where you're like one to three million per crossing or something like that on average. So it's, yes, it is a significant investment on every single one of them, so.
Alright, any other questions?
And I guess.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna add, that was actually something that we didn't hear, you know, from the public on quiet rail. A lot of times you do hear that in rail communities, but that was not something that came up. Thank you.
Think we've all gotten used to the whistles. Alright, anyone else have any other questions? Alright, well, I appreciate KLJ for your time and all your hard work on this plan. It's been a year or so plus of hard work, and we really appreciate what you guys have put into it, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, if not, then we will move on to the next item, which was a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.